Just stating this out loud.
I've been trying to catch up on that.
Hands, keep them warm.
I know, I'm freezing.
So, so is that point? It's gone then to you and...
There goes, there goes check takes down the drain.
Alright, let's get started and call to order the meeting of Brandon City Council of March 4th, 2019, and we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Christina.
Bastian, Clark, Fish, Housman, Parsons, Wakefield, Mayor Lumber.
Here. Okay, we need, do we have any changes or additions, deletions to the agenda?
Item 12A will take off the agenda, there's a few more clarifications on the agreement.
Okay, anything else from the council? Okay, anything else? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as revised?
So moved.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda as revised, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item will approve the minutes of February 14th and February 19th?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the bills and claims submitted with the agenda. Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the bills and claims submitted with the agenda, any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item, we're gonna draw for placement of ballot placement for the mayor election.
Two, one for each of you.
It's not quite tall enough.
Tim Wakefield's first on the ballot.
Okay.
And then Christina, for clarification, we're gonna have the three, three voting areas for...
Yes, there'll be three voting locations open, right here at City Hall for council chambers for Ward 1, fire station for Ward 2, and the golf course for Ward 3.
And the voting date is?
April 9th, and open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Very good, now it's time for anybody that would, from the public that would like to address the council, may do so at this time. Questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Golf course committee report, we have a maintenance staff, Brian, that we need to rehire?
Correct, rehires from last year, someday we'll get the golf course, we'll have maintenance that needs to be done on it, so we should have a staff. Ivan Carr, Jeff Tabbert, Gary Schweitzer, and James Christian, and their information's in your packet.
Can I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion in a second to hire four individuals on the maintenance staff for the golf course this summer, any questions or discussion?
We're thinking end of the month, they'll be ready.
March 23rd. March 21st.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We had a police committee report included with that, I think was of, anything addition to that, chief? We also had a fire chief report in our packet tonight. I would, if I could, just make one comment on that. The fire chief, Robert Dykstra, had some information on the recent events that with the fire hydrant thing and, and a citizen was seen by Chief Call, I think shoveling out a fire hydrant, took a picture, and then council member Dana Clark took off with that. Thank you very much, and created a, what do I wanna call it, a movement, I'll say, to have everybody clean out the fire hydrants, and in addition to that, raised $2,750 for the Brandon Fire, Volunteer Fire Department. And Dana, if you could help me, your business was the lead on that, but there were several other businesses, can you rattle those off for me? I don't, I don't have them at the top of my head.
There's Bill Thompson State Farm, Spartan, Taco John's, no, Divine Treasures, who am I missing?
First National.
First National Bank, thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much to all you, special thanks to Dana for spearheading that, that was just a cool thing to happen in the town, and I was very proud to see that taking place, and it was kind of a cool thing to see. Yeah, I saw the one, very good. Thank you for everybody that was involved in that. Park and Rec report, where they have a work report, it's pretty easy to read, snow removal. Administration report, item 10A, welcome signs, Brian, or Tammy?
Yeah, welcome signs, we have four different options, and this is really just adding two more welcome signs to our two existing signs, and then adding those digital signs to all four of them. We have one that's on the west side of town on Holly, we need to, well, we'd like to move that to the water tower site, so move it further west. And then we have one near Interstate, another one would go probably along Split Rock on the south side of town, and then another one on the east side of town by Aspen. And page 27, I just wrote out there, the software and the resolution of the two different kinds of digital boards are practically the same, there's prices in there for two of the Dectronics boards and two of the Watchfire boards, and they have the same warranty. So not much difference there, really the only difference on those digital boards would be the size.
Okay, and you'll be in the near future going out to bid for those items?
Right, so if we could get approval on the design part of it and what size we wanna go with, then at the next meeting, I'll bring those two locations for the east side and the south side one, and then after that, we can go to bid.
Okay, so you're looking for approval for a design from the city council tonight?
Right.
And size.
For the size.
Just the size, yeah.
I would make a motion that we go with the largest one, it's still $96,000 under bid, it's gonna be, or under our budgets, it's definitely gonna allow a lot more visibility if we go larger.
Yeah, I agree.
And I talked to Tammy a little bit offline on this, and the resolution that these are will be very helpful for us, you'll be able to do graphics and all of that with this type of resolution. Based on the east and west, well, I guess every one of them except for the Interstate one, residents will be traveling at 45 miles an hour, so the bigger we can be, the better, that way we can get them to see the content, so I would also think that the larger the size, the better. And then controls wise, Tammy and I talked a lot about how easy it is to program them and, you know, certain things like that, and I think it'll be a really nice tool for us, we won't have to put a lot of effort into running them.
Very good, I have a motion from Dana, a second by Joe, to approve the larger design of the options that were presented to us tonight by Tammy. Any further discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor of the larger design signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then one, one more thing on that, on page 32, I put in there the thanks for visiting option, if we wanna put something on the back of those signs, that came up a few days ago, so I just didn't know if you wanted to go that route, or if you just wanted to leave the back of the sign blank.
How much extra is it?
Um, to replace the existing signs, it's about $5,200 each one of them, because they have to take the sign apart and then bring it to Sioux Falls, put the letters on it and bring it back, and on the new signs, it's $2,900 each.
Can we get the picture of the sign?
Yeah.
I think it'd be a nice touch to do that, tall of them.
Do, do you want it to say thanks for visiting, or do you wanna put buy Brandon on it, or something like that?
Thanks for supporting Brandon.
Thanks for supporting Brandon. But we can talk about that at the next meeting, too. And come up with some different ideas, if that's what we're interested in.
Okay. Item 10B, the compensation for committee assignments, Brian?
The only two committees that aren't being compensated currently are the Water Development Committee, which is a temporary one, and then the Development Committee that Chuck is running, which is... Yeah.
Okay.
So those are the only two, we can certainly draft up a resolution if the council wants to, to compensate those, those members, but those are the only two currently that aren't.
Tonight, we're looking for approval to, no, we've approved the other committees.
Yep, we've approved the Water Conservation Committee.
And we're just looking at the rest of the committees.
Correct.
Okay.
I wouldn't recommend doing anything with that development, I think it'll be still sporadic.
Okay, Mr. Wakefield?
And then the Water Development Committee, we're basically coming to an end here soon, hopefully, so I don't think that the timing at this point would make sense, but it's something that if there's any concerns brought up to me, I'll make sure that the council's aware.
Very good.
So now on the compensation for either one, alright?
Okay, item 10C is council review of employee concerns slash administrative policies that Lisa presented to you this morning, I believe.
I provided to you some administrative policies for your consideration, you just got them today, so I don't know that you wanna have any discussion on what the verbiage is gonna be, I think it's something we can maybe finalize next meeting, but certainly willing to entertain any questions.
Maybe just a little clarity, 'cause I'd asked for this to be on here, I think we just need to, for the one point within this policy, make sure that we're on the same page with employee concerns, and I'm not talking about the random concern of I didn't get my birthday off, I'm talking about the significant employee concern that feels, hey, this needs to go to the next level, so I don't think we're completely on the same page with how that gets handled, we did have one of those situations arise, so I just wanna make sure that we have some discussion around that, and let the employees know that that is an avenue, if it is significant.
So right now, the way I've drafted is, after employee has gone through his or her chain of command up to the supervisor department head, then the city administrator, then it would be incumbent upon the employee if they want to discuss with council or the mayor the issue, to, I propose either contact the mayor to be put on the agenda, or contact the personnel committee liaisons of the city council, so that's how it's drafted, and then there's some other administrative policies on there about posting agendas and things of that nature, too, so just several different administrative policies for you to consider, so we can make sure we have something in place to understand who are the individuals that should be contacted for something like that.
Just for clarity, right now, there is nothing in place, so employees are able to come to council if they feel it's worthy.
Right, there's nothing in place in terms of a set procedure, and that's what we're looking at, so there's nothing to prohibit them from visiting right now and coming before the council, just kinda trying to get more of a set procedure, which is very common in councils and commissions and boards, to have some type of procedure to have the employees first visit with their direct supervisors, unless, you know, there's a sexual harassment issue or something like that, where the direct supervisor is the potential wrongdoer, and then we have that policy, for example, already in place, so.
So just to clarify, it would be their choice whether they come during the public comment section or ask for executive session?
Well, it kinda depends on the nature of what the issue is, if it's something regarding a personnel issue, that the council has the ability to be heard in executive session, the council is the body that makes the motion go in executive session, so if it's something related to a personnel issue, or otherwise something that should be in executive session per the statutes, then once we find out what the issue is, we either set it for executive session or set it for public session.
And Lisa, can I just have clarification, you said come before council, can they go to individual council members?
Right now, we don't have anything that says they can't go to council members, they're citizens, as, most of them are citizens of Brandon that are employees, so there's nothing that says they can't go and visit with a city council member if it's a matter of public concern, for example, but we, as a public entity, also have the ability to have a policy in place that would direct, if we wanted to, to whom an employee concern would go to, and so that's what we're trying to address.
Okay.
And that would be something in the employee handbook then, or where does this actually land, I'm just kinda trying to understand the policy part of it?
We could put it in the employee handbook, or we could just put it in our administrative policies, but it could go into the employee handbook, just because something is not in the employee handbook doesn't mean employees aren't supposed to follow other policies that we have, so at your direction, we could put it in the handbook, or we could just have it within administrative policies.
I think it'd be nice to have it in the handbook, because then every employee gets a copy of the handbook, they understand what the policies are, it's all, just follow the, connect the dots type thing.
Very good, council, let's review the policy that was presented by our city attorney over the next two-week period, and communicate any changes with Brian, any suggestions that you would have with Brian, and we'll go for there and put it on the agenda next board meeting. Okay, item 10D, Brian, ambulance license.
I've reviewed the applications submitted by MedStar, a couple of minor things, equipment list, and a couple of changes since the county has changed their ordinance, and we refer to the county ordinance, which doesn't have these sections anymore, but, and a list of rates, which really isn't relevant, so I will get those from MedStar, so I would recommend approving the license contingent upon an equipment list and a rate list.
Okay. Sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second to approve the license contingent upon property listing and...
Yeah, an equipment list and a rate list.
Equipment listing, okay, very good. Any further discussion or questions?
And the term? It's just, it's one year currently, so.
End of this year?
Yeah.
Very good, any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10E, insurance request for proposals, Brian?
You've got the two proposals submitted, one from A.J. Gallagher and one from Casey Sanu.
Okay, can you take us through the process a little bit, what was entailed with the...
Submitted a request for proposal, requesting their services that they can do, fees, you know, insurance licenses, et cetera, to provide insurance broker agent services to us.
Okay, but we had a, or we had a thing that they had to have in by 10:00 a.m. on that date, and Gallagher didn't have theirs in.
They were missing two components, one was their errors and omissions insurance, and the other was their license to do business.
And why are we letting them come in?
Lisa took a look at it, I think she sent out an email.
I think you have the discretion for several different reasons as to why, if you want to consider both proposals, you can, it would be if you're in discretion, the RFP specifically said you could waive any formalities or allow corrections of errors and omissions in the application, so the RFP specifically said you can do that, I don't think there's any South Dakota law that requires you to not be able to do that, so if the council wants to accept both RFPs as complete for the consideration, the council has the discretion to do that, that would have to be a decision of the council.
They, they both had some, some inconsistencies, if you will, I mean, the other proposal was submitted by Financial and Service, Financial and Service Services, and we did not receive any ENO coverage for financial insurance services or a business license for financial insurance services. I would make a motion that we approve the proposal from Lisa Maka, I think it's time that we get some fresh perspectives on this, our current agent's had it for 21 years, and he's a sole proprietor, which causes a little bit of concern if something were to happen to him. The other proposal is one that comes, excuse me, extensively with a, a large background of a team here locally, just in Sioux Falls, and then a network that's, that's ongoing, including a compliance department over in Omaha, so I would make a motion that we move forward with the proposal from Lisa Maka.
So just for clarification, if we move forward with that, it doesn't obligate us to anything?
Well, this is, this is an agent of record change, so she would be our agent for one year, we could change it again in a year, we could change it every year if we want to.
I'd ask for a second on the motion.
Uh, I, I've got a question, and Dana, this Arthur G. Gallagher?
Hold it here, let's, let's get the right order here, we need a second before we should continue discussing it. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, there's motion and a second, now we can discuss.
Okay, I was driving by your office, and just to clarify, but isn't this the same people that are in your office, in your building? 'Cause they have a, they have a sign up on your, on your building that they're there.
Yeah, they do, this is an entity that employs 30,000 people, and I do have a family member that works for this company out of a different branch, out of a different office, out of a different division, has absolutely nothing to do with this person or this division, and I would have absolutely nothing to gain by this.
I personally feel like it's a conflict of interest, especially since you have them in your building, and I don't, is it your husband that works there?
Adam, Adam is a commercial agribusiness producer, he does not sell health insurance, I do not do group health insurance, it's not a conflict of interest, to be a conflict, you have to somehow benefit or gain, I have no benefit here. Maybe Lisa can weigh in.
No, but his company would benefit.
Not mine.
No, his, I said.
No, it's not his company.
Well, the one he works for.
I'm not quite sure, I guess I don't see it any more of a conflict than when we, some months ago went to First National Bank to try to get financing, I worked for them, but I wasn't involved with approving the financing or doing anything like that, and I didn't see a conflict in voting them, so I view this as kinda the same thing.
So just because we take a look at this doesn't mean that we're changing any insurance coverage at this time. So we're just looking, exploring, which, you know, I thi, I think we have to do our due diligence over the years to do that, and so I don't want the staff to start thinking that we're changing anything, because we're not, we're just looking, and I, I think we have to look.
So when I review this information, there's a ton of information here, and specifically the commission rates are cheaper with this firm, which means we could most likely have the same coverage for our employees and pay a smaller commission to the agent of record, and that's where we can start seeing some of the cost savings as a community that we would be looking for. The other thing is, is that this also is a firm, not a sole proprietor, which will mean that we would have the potential to have better support. When you get into corporations like this, they will have a, a team that'll come in and help with enrollment, and that's what they specialize in, they'll have people that are specialized in medicines and all those, so having a team, I think, will be something that's very welcomed by our staff, I've been in insurance coverages before where there's been an entire team, and it's, it's amazing being able to get the answers that you so need. Again, this is not necessarily meaning we're gonna be changing from Blue Cross Blue Shield to a different, this just means that the person that's in charge of our insurance package would change.
I mean, it is changing the agent of record on insurance, so you're correct, it would not necessarily mean the change of insurance, both companies could write that, but you are changing the agent of record, and I did, also did some investigation on there, and Casey Sanu is the current agent of record on the City of Brandon's health insurance program here, and from my investigation with the employees and the administration, he's done a very good job, always asked, always done whatever we have asked him to do, and done everything in a very fine manner, and so they had no reason to doubt his abilities there, and the other thing, on the costs, the agent, the Sanu firm was $1 less than the other firm on the health insurance side, which is minimal difference, I understand that, but it was less, and I would throw that Sanu's firm is a local firm, so I would put a plug in for that, too.
Exactly.
He was a dollar less, but his percentages on the ancillary products were quite a bit higher, so that's what Mr. Wakefield was talking about, that would equate to more than a dollar charge.
I understand that, Dana, but you're dealing with something that we don't have right now, I'm talking about what we have right now is less under the Sanu proposal than the other, the other products were products that we would be looking at that were estimated commission costs, and that's just that estimated commission cost, so we don't know, there's no hard number there, there is a hard number on the health insurance. Other questions?
The other piece of information that I found very specific to looking at comparing between the two is the liability coverage that each firm has. Mister, our current provider has $1 million limits of liability, and the other firm has 17 million, which provides better coverage for the business itself.
Any other questions or discussion?
Well, I'd be remiss in saying that, you know, we've, we talk about buy Brandon and Brandon Strong and all this stuff, and if we go with somebody who has an office here in Brandon but is 30,000 people strong, it's, and we're, Casey's already a dollar cheaper, you know, to me, it's a no, no-brainer.
I just wanna clarify, the proposal that was turned in has a Sioux Falls address for business and a Sioux Falls address on his resume, so there's no difference there between the agents.
Hearing no other questions, I'd ask Christina call the roll on the question. Changing the agent of record to Lisa Mako, Mako, Maka?
Clark.
With Gallagher and Associates.
Okay, Clark?
Could I ask one more question?
Yes, you may.
Well, the whole point of this was to look at some different ideas, so if we've asked for those before from our current agent, I don't know, maybe we haven't, you know, have we gotten that, that's been the whole question on this, is are there some other ideas out there, and it didn't seem to be coming forward from the current agent, so maybe that's our fault, maybe that's his fault, but that's where this all started.
Any other?
Were we specific on what we wanted from him? I guess I don't remember. I know we've been talking about it for a while. I don't, I guess I'm remiss in not wanting to change right away?
Christina, call a question.
Clark?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Housman?
Nope.
Parsons?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Motion carries for, for one. Okay, item 10F, fireworks awareness committee, I think we, a plan going forward is that we as a council and/or administration wanna kinda promote this in-house, is that accurate, Brian? And Dana, I think handed out something to you tonight?
Yeah, this was just kinda the, the final draft, I had worked with this with, with a resident and came up with a timetable of, of what seems to be an effective plan, just to help give the city some guidance on what that can look like, but I don't believe we had any other interest from any citizens come forward, so we'll just dismantle the committee. But I don't believe we had any other interest from any citizens come forward, so we'll just dismantle the committee.
Very good. Any questions from the rest of the council? You know, you just got it tonight.
There's a lot of work here, so we'll have to figure out how we divvy up the task. It seems like there's quite a bit here and some even for the integration into the school. So we'll definitely have some homework to do, but.
Very good. Moving on to the street committee, there's a maintenance work report there. Imagine what that entails. Item 11B is a recommendation to purchase a 2019 Volvo loader. As outlined, purchased off the National Joint Power Agreement. Brian, is that accurate?
It's now called Sourcewell. Used to be the National Joint Powers Association.
I'll run through the numbers on that. It's a 2019 Volvo, $168,621 is the amount. And they are also factoring in a trade-in of the current 2008 loader. And given a price of $40,000 on that for a net of whatever that is, but you also want to add in the $6,500 for a five-year warranty, correct?
Correct.
So net-net would be $136,371.
Correct.
Any questions from the council, or could I have a motion to approve that?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions? Motion and second. Any questions on the bid for a 2019 Volvo loader?
We had, how much was budgeted for this line item?
$200,000.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. We now are to item 11C, Maple Street, parentheses Park Street Corridor Study update. Mr. Sanal is here to give us a little update on the project that he's been working on with his firm, which is HDR. Mr. Sanal, you're up.
Yeah, if you can see it easier, it might be. Wow. You want to turn it on? There you go. Thank you. All right. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Maple Street, Park Street Corridor Study information that we have to date. I'm Paul Sanal with HDR, and I have with me John Wiggand, also with HDR. I'm the project manager, and John is the traffic engineer. So again, I want to thank you for allowing us to present this exciting information. This is pretty similar to what we did at the public meeting a few weeks back. So if you were there, you've had an opportunity to see most of this. If not, this was the introduction, presentation to the public for this corridor study. We've made a few revisions to it, just to be more specific to the City of Brandon. I want to, just real quick, if you have any questions or comments during the presentation, please feel free to ask us during the presentations, sort of an informal presentation. I also have handouts on your table in front of you. If you want to pull those out, and if you have any questions that you want to write down, we can address those after the meeting as well. And then I'll have my contact information. If you want, you can also email those comments to me. So just overall, project understanding of the corridor study, these are pretty high-level aspects of a general corridor study. The cooperative effort that we have as a part of this study, which I'll introduce to you, the members, the agencies that are a part of this so far, is a little unique in the matter that this corridor stretches between multiple agencies. The planning, safety, and efficient corridors is pretty typical of a project like this, a corridor study that we've identified some traffic and safety concerns due to increase in traffic, which is inherently from the growth adjacent to that corridor, and some of the changes that we see in traffic patterns due to that growth. These are the agencies that are involved in this corridor study. This is what we call the study advisory team. The South Dakota Department of Transportation is actually who are running the project and the funding, majority of the funding is coming from for this corridor study. And I want to be specific when I say "we" or "our" through the presentation. This is really who I'm talking about. This is our team. The Sioux Falls Metropolitan Planning Organization, which you're more than likely familiar with. And you actually have one of your staff members, Tammy Janzma, which sits on the technical, UDC, Urban Development Committee, and they meet once a month. Yep. And then the Federal Highway Administration is also involved in this, just from the standpoint that as they continue to be involved in this corridor study, if there were a project in the future and it potentially qualifies for funding, they want to be included in that discussion. Split Rock Township, as most of you are aware, this is actually their jurisdiction, so they maintain this corridor. For the most part, I should be specific, in the area west of the city limits currently is their area that they maintain. Minnehaha County has been a very active team member in this. City of Sioux Falls, yourself, and HDR. The corridor study limits, Veterans Parkway is the west edge of the corridor limits, which is typically referred to as Highway 100. And in a lot of the previous discussion in the DOT and the City of Sioux Falls study, that's what you'll hear, a lot of Highway 100 construction. It's actually Veterans Parkway in this area of the corridor, so that's on the west end. Six Mile Road is the next corridor to the east that's considered an arterial. And then you have the rural residential Indian Hills Trail, Oak Road area, Big Sioux River, and then continuing to the east, the Big Sioux Rec, which is the west edge of the city limits of Brandon. And then some landmarks, the Brandon Valley Schools, the Intermediate School in the west, and Robert Bennis on the east side of that, adjacent to Sioux Boulevard. And then the intersections at Locust, Sioux, a potential intersection in the future there between Sioux and what we call SD-11 in the study, which is also known as Split Rock Boulevard in the City of Brandon city limits. And I'd like to point out another intersection that we're including in this overall study and taking a look at the impact of the potential removal of Sioux Boulevard's connection to SD-11, which has been just a point of discussion at this point. And John will discuss that, the impact and some changes that we could potentially see if we do remove Sioux Boulevard off of SD-11. Purpose and goals, I just want to go through this real quick. This was a slide that I created for the public meeting, and it gives you an idea of the overall goals and purpose of the study. When we talk short, midterm, and long-term goals for the City of Brandon and this corridor, we're talking about two to five for the short term, midterm is the next 10 years, and then long-term is 25 years out. And so when we look at long-term planning, and as far as the Sioux Falls Regional and Metropolitan Planning Organization, that's what they look at in their documentation and their corridor studies. And again, I mentioned the developing a growth and access plan, and then the safety and efficient corridors. From a planning standpoint, we wanted to make sure that we were in contact with the Split Rock Township. Excuse me. Just on a maintenance advice and the importance of the public input as well, the people that live along that corridor, there's a different expectation from those groups of people. So we want to make sure that we're including their comments and/or discussion in the overall study and the impact that they would potentially perceive and/or what is reality. And with the Split Rock Township discussion, we actually got them on board with the study advisory team later through the process of developing that. And it's important that we get their information in regards to the cost of maintenance and what the expectancy is of the maintenance itself. And just to touch on that real quick, it's been really interesting, because the people that live along the corridor, difference of opinion as well on what they would like to see from a maintenance standpoint. If it's nice and smooth, people drive fast. If it's bumpy, which is the majority of the time, just because the cost of the maintenance and the effort that Split Rock Township has to burden to make sure that it is smooth, typically we see more of a rough surface, and it actually slows traffic down. So we get comments on both sides. As a result of our public input, if you've been to the public meetings, we like to make sure that we have comment cards in different ways that the public can access also that we're available to them and we're getting those comments. And I'll show you a website at the end that we've actually taken all the comment cards and comments that we had from the public meeting, which was very well-attended. I think we had close to 100 residents there, and I know some of the council was there. And I recognize, obviously, some people in the audience that were there as well. So appreciate that feedback, and it's nice to have as many people as we can to get there to get comments from both sides and take that into consideration in our final report, which obviously is our end result, and that will include some recommendations. I just want to go back. Any questions on that before I turn it over to John? Okay, so John Wiggand is here to present some more exciting information.
Thanks. So one of the things that we, at the start of this corridor, or the study, is trying to really hone in on what the needs are of the corridor. And first part of that is really, it's taking a look at the bigger picture. And here is shown with the Brandon Growth Area, and, you know, really looking at traffic as a whole, not necessarily just the corridor itself. That the Maple Park Street corridor is on Section Line Road. Typically, in this metropolitan area, that's where the arterial streets are. And as you can see, you know, just when you look at the I-90 corridor, Holly Rice corridor, Park, Maple, Madison, you know, all very important east-west corridors that really handle a lot of the same types of traffic. So we want to look at with, you know, if we do improvements on this corridor, we don't do improvements on this corridor, how does that affect, you know, traffic from more of a regional perspective? So with that, with the picture you see here, this is from the 2040 Long Range Transportation Plan, and it lists 10 projects here within the Brandon Growth Area, anticipated kind of in that 20, 25-year timeframe. They are ranked by priority, and you'll see that the two and the four with the Park Street and the Maple Street corridors respectively. So as you can see, the, there is a regional importance of improving these corridors, you know, not only for this Maple Park Street roadway itself, but from a regional traffic perspective as well. So with that, you know, the next step is really taking a look at the corridor itself in terms of traffic volumes. And the numbers up there that you see on the top, those are the existing daily volumes. What we'd see at the average volume throughout the year, you know, you can, very different from west end to east, which, you know, would be anticipated, given where the development is, the type of roadway, you know, just under 200 vehicles per day. There between Veterans Parkway, Six Mile Road, and then or to the east along Park, upwards of 2,000 vehicles per day, a lot of that, you know, driven by the school and just the development that has access off of Park there itself. So as we start to determine what the needs are and we look at, you know, potential solutions to address those needs, we forecast traffic volumes out to what we call year 2030, 2040, and 2045. And we obtain those volumes from the Sioux Falls NPL's Regional Travel Demand Model, which builds in anticipated growth and development throughout the area, generates traffic, loads it onto a network, and we can use those volumes to develop what we expect for volumes based on expected growth over the next 20, 25 years along the corridor. And we have, you know, three predominant growth types along this corridor. Towards the west end, Veterans Parkway, that's where you get a lot more of the mixed-use, higher-traffic-generator-type development, office parks, apartments, those sorts of things, typical DC next to a high-speed, high-volume roadway like Veterans Parkway. Moving east between Six Mile Road and really the river, you know, that's the lower-density residential, kind of that acreage development, so not generating, you know, the high volumes that you see there on the west end. And then towards the east, a lot of the areas already been developed, but we have identified, there's that area between Sioux Boulevard and South Dakota 11 Split Rock Boulevard, where there's that potential for mixed-use development, also that potential for the expansion of the park area. So we took, you know, what we've seen for some conceptual plans in that area. We've looked at the traffic. We generate traffic based on those plans. Those volumes are included when we're analyzing future improvements. That has been included in the model here. So just kind of give you an idea of what we were seeing for traffic volumes out kind of in that year 2045 timeframe. Towards the west end in that higher-mixed-use area, upwards of 25,000 vehicles per day, be expected over there. Drops off significantly as you move east towards Six Mile Road. Between Six Mile Road and the river, kind of looking at 8,000, 8,500 range. And then east on Park, kind of around the Sioux Boulevard intersection, upwards that 10,000 to 12,000 vehicles per day, just with that higher level of development there. So one of the things I did want to touch on, you know, especially here in the City of Brandon area, you know, we did incorporate, or we looked at, you know, if we do extend Park Street to the east and make that connection to South Dakota 11, that that would likely require that the current intersection of Sioux Boulevard and South Dakota 11 need to be vacated. So what does that do to traffic volumes? And what we've found so far is getting to that point that, you know, the intersection of Sioux Boulevard and Park, really as it is right now, you know, has a lot ample capacity. And even with those changing traffic patterns, you know, as we close off, you know, that intersection of Sioux Boulevard, traffic is now, has to go different routes, you know, to maybe get to the parking lot or the drop-off area of the elementary school, has to maybe go a different route to the intermediate school, those sorts of things, that the intersection of Sioux Boulevard and Park has a lot ample capacity to handle those changes in traffic patterns. So that's something that we're definitely in, you know, consideration as we look at the different alternatives and different configurations, particularly here on the east end. And one other need I wanted to touch on here briefly is the safety aspect. So what we looked at, you know, from a data standpoint, is looking at the crash history. And with this, we looked at the last five years, recognizing that certainly there's, you know, been other crashes, you know, over the last, you know, several years that people have experienced with. You know, they brought those forward at the public and the stakeholder meetings. With the crash history in the last five years, you know, the 18 total crashes along this entire corridor, one of those between Veterans Parkway and Six Mile Road. Then there are 10 crashes, kind of what we call the rural area between Six Mile Road and the Big Sioux River Bridge, as you can see, really dispersed throughout the corridor. Can't really identify any crash trends. There weren't any clusters of crashes, per se, on this corridor. And then the urban area, which is within the Brandon city limits, there are seven crashes. Five of those occurred at the South Dakota 11 Sioux Boulevard intersection. Two of those were at the Locust intersection, with one of those being a pedestrian-related crash that resulted in injury. So, you know, particularly with the crashes at Locust, you know, that's something also that we're taking into consideration, is we're looking at alternatives, you know, with the schools there, with the potential, and, you know, there are a lot of children that cross Park Street. And how does that play into, you know, it's a very, very important consideration if we're looking at, you know, various improvements or modifications, particularly through this segment right here. How do we accommodate those children and not create a barrier from the residential areas to the schools? So yes, any questions on the traffic or safety piece before I turn over to Paul?
I just want to point out-
I'll ask one quick question on the traffic. How would you, when you're looking at the models, how do you expect it to change? How do you expect the numbers to change once the street is paved? So obviously, right now, a lot of, I see a lot of families turning right and heading back to Sioux Boulevard when they leave the intermediate school. As soon as that's paved, I would expect to see most of those families turn left and head into Sioux Falls. Are you taking that into account on your calculations, and what do you expect that to look like?
Yeah. Yeah, so we would anticipate that, you know, if it were to be paved, that there would be an immediate jump in traffic volumes. So one thing we are looking at, too, is that 2030 timeframe, which is kind of that halfway in between today and 2045. So the 2030 volumes would be kind of reflective of that jump, because we'd also, it assumes that there's some additional development, but not fully developed. So, you know, just for that consideration, we looked, it's pretty much a straight-line growth. So some of those, you know, west end excluded, you know, it's not going to jump to 25,000 vehicles per day overnight on the west end. But you will see kind of that, you know, probably 2,000 or 3,000 vehicle-per-day jump, you know, within a few years.
I just wanted to point out, at the public meeting, we had a very- I just wanted to point out, at the public meeting, we had a very attentive staff member from the city of Brandon that noticed that 18 total crashes, and the 10 and the 7 that we have up there don't quite add up, and so I just wanted to say that the one that we had was west of Six Mile Road that, that John had referred to, so as analytical as we are, that was not a mistake. So this is our study schedule. As of recently, we've had a few revisions, but nothing major from the very beginning of this study, so when we laid out our original schedule, it's still very similar to what we had started with back in September, I believe, Tammy, wasn't it, August, September? So we had our first public meeting, and we have other dates in our overall schedule, so if you want to see our overall schedule, including when we took traffic data, we did some, John and I did some pedestrian observation at the intersection with the Brandon Valley Intermediate School principal, and with the schools, we've been, been doing some coordinating with them, and again, thank you for allowing us to have that public meeting at the school. That works out really well, because it's right on the corridor, so. Brandon Valley, or Brandon's City Council presentation tonight, March 4th. We plan on having the draft concept report, we've worked through some of the memos that John referred to from the safety and a traffic impact standpoint, so that we do have that information now that we've been discussing tonight, some of those numbers, that we'll be presenting more of that at the next public meeting. We have a study advisory team meeting coming up April 9th, and that will be in conjunction with that draft report being submitted to the members of our study advisory team for review. And then we'll have the public meeting number two, which will have all of that information included for public presentation, and that, I'm thinking that's going to be around the third or fourth week in April, I currently have it planned for the third week, but just in coordination with the, with the school and getting that finalized and, and reservations made and getting invites out. I haven't finalized that date yet. And then the final corridor study report will be in May. This is our contact information, the, the two of us that are mainly involved as far as from a contact standpoint, Brad Remick with the DOT is the project manager that is managing the contract, and then myself, the project manager with HDR, and I can get this contact information if anybody wants it tonight, you can either take a picture of that, or I've got cards as well. And then the website, the DOT has created a website on their, on their page where we have downloaded all of the public meeting number one information, including all of the comments that we received to date. We received them in numerous forms, email, comment cards, and mailings, we had people that mailed in their comments as well, so we got really, we had really good response from the public, and there's some, there's some really good comments on there, if you want to go on there and take a look at and get a feel for the general opinion of the adjacent property owners, it's really good information. With that, if anybody has any additional questions, I just wanted to point some of these pictures out, and most of us are aware or familiar with this corridor. I drive it when it's decent enough to drive on. It's very narrow, and in these areas where we have a lot of topography, that sightline is, is, it's difficult to see vehicles coming over the hills, and one of the complaints that, that was sort of resounding was that this area doesn't get patrolled a lot, and it's actually to the point where people speed on it, that patrolling it and pulling somebody over on the gravel road is, it, it puts them in a difficult situation as well, and that, you'll, you'll see that in those comments if you read through that. The first picture on the upper left is looking to the west, just as you go down that low point to the culvert that was recently extended, they actually closed Maple this fall, the Split Rock Township did, to extend the end of that box previously, it was right at the edge of the gravel driving surface, and it was actually falling off into the, into the drainage channel. See a lot of erosion in that picture and just the steep slopes that exist right now, it's really difficult to maintain the existing ditches, which they've done some erosion control projects recently. The other one, I just, the, the picture of the school bus stop is, it just adds another heightened awareness of the corridor, and then obviously, looking back to the east, this is a picture in the bottom, back towards Brandon, I think Rasmussen's own that driveway right there that come out. And so a lot of the, one thing that we're taking a look at is some of the sections that we could potentially propose through there, whether that's a two-lane or a three-lane or even an urban five-lane in the future, that's the ultimate, would be an ultimate build-out, but some of, we're still talking about those sections that we want to run through there and, and putting an actual profile grade that would work based on design speeds and putting cost estimates together, and that'll all be completed as a part of the final report.
So Paul, part of it's called Park and part of it's called Maple.
Correct.
Is there going to be a resolution to that so that there's just one name? I'm directionally challenged already, and two names on one road is a challenge for me.
We have not, we have not discussed what the name of this corridor would be, but currently it's Park Street to the city limits of Brandon and Maple to the west. There, there's a place where you can, you can make comments, and if you would like, I can get you a comment card. The public meeting number two is, when I get that scheduled, it's a city invite. It is difficult, even from our standpoint, when we first started this, we called it Maple Park Street Corridor Study, and people were like, where's Maple Park at? Brian, I think, brought that to our attention, so I started calling it Maple Street, Park Street Corridor Study.
Are there any addresses that have? It's pretty limited, though, right?
Uh, the intermediate school.
Thank you, Paul, I appreciate the update, any further questions for the council?
You're welcome.
If so, if you think of them later, just contact Paul at his firm and, or the website, and sure that you can put your suggestions in there, and we appreciate the expediency of this.
Yeah, you're welcome, and it seems like a long period of time between the time that we actually had our first public meeting and now, but it was, it just worked out good for us to, good, good, I appreciate the time, and we will have a second presentation to the City Council of Brandon when we finish our report.
Final report, very good.
All right.
Thank you.
Great, if you have any questions in the meantime, please contact us. All right?
Very good, moving on, item 11D, Tammy has an update on safety on school zone crosswalks for us?
Okay. It's not quite working. Christina, do you know how to get rid of that? It's off of my screen. Yeah. Or I'll just move it up to the corner. No? Perfect. Okay, so I know the agenda says for the school zone, but I would really like to look at Holly as a whole, because in our budget, we have a project set aside for that, and it's for a joint repair project, and within that project, that would run from Sioux, so kind of by Casey's there, all the way to Split Rock, so just less than a mile. Within that, I want to talk about four different items, which is the striping, the ADA curb ramps, the signs, and then RRFBs, which is the rectangular rapid flashing beacons. And so I'm going to start on the west end of Holly. And I want to point out at this intersection, this is Cardinal or Robin, Robin, this crosswalk is striped across Holly, it has the traffic sign, and then it also has for the curb ramps. So curb ramp is just this little area here, and this is a detectable warning at the bottom. In this intersection, there should be, it would, we recommend that there'd be two curb ramps on each corner like this one, but this one only has the one that goes across Robin and not across Holly, even though it's striped. And if we look at this corner, this curb ramp's here, but again, not the one across Holly, even though it's striped, and then we have an extra curb ramp here that really doesn't need to be there. So as far as that joint repair project, the striping is pretty easy, the signs are pretty easy to replace, but these curb ramps, they get expensive pretty fast, so I'm not going to recommend that we add those to the project, but that we should probably look at replacing those when we redo our core area. So there's those curb ramps, and then we come up here to the next intersection, and this one is also striped across Holly. And then notice this one here has like a decorative concrete kind of stamped in there, and it has a red crosswalk. And this one also has the traffic signs, but if we go up to Main, we have the curb ramps, but then it's not striped across Holly. So we have a little bit of inconsistencies, and this one also doesn't have a pedestrian sign here. If we, we did take this sign down, and then this one also is not striped. So what I'd really like to do is add into that joint repair project, if we're still going to move ahead with that, is to add in the striping, but then not do anything with the curb ramps yet. And then, if I can jump ahead here, when we get to fourth, we have a push button crossing right here that has many signs leading up to it, which we removed a few of those. But this sign with the flashers, we'd like to replace those with a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, which really makes the, the crosswalk stand out more. Those range anywhere from about 5,000 to 8,500, depending if we can hardwire those in or if we need solar panels. And when we do this intersection, if we go up forward with those RRFBs, there's two other intersections in town that probably should have those also, and that's at Sioux and Aspen, where we have one flashing light, that one has quite a bit of traffic, or pedestrian traffic, and then at Locust and Park. And then, if we come up here in front of the middle school, I think I'm going to reach out to Federal Highway, because I, I did reach out to the city of Sioux Falls and another consultant, just to see what they thought about this intersection. If you see here, this has a curb ramp across Holly, and there's a curb ramp across this driveway that's used for their buses. And then same with this intersection, has one across Holly, and then one across Fifth Street. But if we come up here, we have one that would cross Holly, not striped, and then we don't have one that connects there. So I'm assuming that it was removed when that turn lane was put in, and I'd like to just remove this curb ramp. Now it's kind of, I've been told it's, it's frowned upon to remove it if it's already been placed there, and that we should add one to here, but at the same time, if a child's leaving that middle school, we want them to either go to the signal, or we want them to go to that RRFB, that flashing one at the next intersection. So we really wouldn't want to recommend them to cross there. And then, this really got started with Riley coming in and having a few requests, and so his first request was to change the gels and the crosswalk lights from yellow to red. We really can't do that, but we can do the RRFBs. And then he recommended the fourth and Holly and the Aspen and Sioux intersection. He also asked to change all the traffic signals, as far as making it pretty much an all-way stop, and then having so much time for those kids to cross, so like, that vehicles can't really turn right. I think that's going to involve quite a bit of reamping our signal system there, and so we can look at that maybe and put that into our capital improvement plan, but not try to incorporate that into this plan. I don't really see that as being feasible for this year. And the only other thing that he asked was to have more monitoring at crosswalks, which I don't know that we can provide too much more monitoring, I know the school is looking at that, and then he was going to put together a PowerPoint to do some more education. And then I also have a couple of kids that reach out to me that would like to put together a GoPro video if we do put in those RRFBs. To, just to show them how to push the button, wait for the lights to flash, and they're pretty cool at night, so.
Why do you want to do those, those curb things with the core project instead of with this project?
So we have in the budget 250,000 for that joint repair project, and that joint repair project, we'll probably be replacing 250 to 300 cubic yards, so that adds quite a bit of cost right there, plus we want to reseal all the joints and that, and that's about 80,000, plus restriping it. So we're pushing that 250,000 pretty easily, and then if we're going to add signs plus the RRFBs. And I was a little bit concerned about not bidding this probably until the middle of April, that's probably going to be the earliest that I could put those plans together and get it sent out. But there are four contractors that normally do jobs like this, and I reached out to them. I heard back from three of them, and they all seemed very interested, because it's mostly filler work, it's not, it's not a huge project, but it's still a good project. So if we're okay with spending a little bit extra, then I think we should definitely do the striping and then add the RRFBs and the traffic signs.
So with the striping, Tammy, would you make it more what I call uniform?
Yes.
So you'd add some more diagonal stripes?
Yes, so these, even where they're striped, they're just the solid white line acrossed. City of Sioux Falls actually went away from that standard and put in the diagonal ones so that people don't get that mixed up with the stop bar. I don't know if I can, yeah, so this is a stop bar right in front of that truck, and then this would be the crosswalk. So what we do is do the perpendicular crossings. Yeah.
Or down on Sioux. So they'll be uniform like that, what I'd like to see.
Yeah, so then moving forward, we can, as we do striping projects, then we'll replace those.
Do you have a ballpark, Tammy, for, for the flashers and the striping and the pedestrian signs, or removing the curb like altogether?
I'm thinking it's going to be about 300 to 325, just randomly guessing, I don't have all the quantities and everything put together, but... The only other small thought that I had, and I need to check with Federal Highway to see if it's allowed, was we have a lot of crossings across Holly, and in an attempt to get those kids to go on certain crossings, my thought was maybe some of these, as far as like a safe routes to school, we would paint them red and maybe put the black paw prints across it, or say the Link's Way, that sort of thing, just to kind of draw them to that. But when you get to those ADA ramps, they do have something in there that's called light and dark and dark and light, it has to stand out, that detectable warning, and so our detectable warnings there are red, and I don't know if we want to paint that surface red leading up to those, so I'd have to check on that if we wanted to do something creative that way, but definitely not required.
I guess we're checking in too.
Okay, I'll move ahead with trying to put together those plans and coming up with a cost estimate, and then maybe at the next meeting, then we'll go for approval for bids, if we still want to do that.
Very good, sounds like you have your marching orders, thank you. Item 12B. Item 12B. We have a proposal from Tammy to, under the MPO funds to cover a portion of her salary and some traffic counters. Apply for a grant.
Yes. So it is kind of like a grant. The MPO has their budget and this is amending their budget. And so those traffic counters really, the MPO would cover about 80% of that, a little over 80%. And then the only requirement there is that we share our information with them, which we would do anyway. Next year, they're going to update their long, their long range transportation plan. And so they'll look at Maple and Holly and those and then do some updated counts. As far as the salary part of that, just to be clear, that's not, that's not, that's not adding to my salary, that's just reimbursing part of my salary. So everything that I do for traffic planning, so not preliminary design, not design, it's just planning. So when I go to those UDC meetings or I go to the corridor study meetings, then that's covered with Federal Highway funds.
Very good. I think we probably need a motion to amend the-
We don't. No, it's just for your information. The MPO will amend their budget, not our budget.
Okay.
Are there any other things that we should be trying to, either looking forward or asking them? I mean, this is a good program and we've been chipping in a long time for the MPO. Is there anything else that we can use or that we could ask for support?
So eventually, we're going to have to put together like a transportation plan. I think we as city staff can do a pretty good job of kind of laying out our priorities and when things need milling overlays and that sort of thing. But as far as having a survey done, we had a company come in probably five years ago and they drive their truck over the street and they measure how many cracks. Some of that is usually covered with MPO funds. And so I think there's some opportunities there, but being that this is amending their original budget, I think we're, we're asking for a lot already for 28,000. In the coming year, definitely I'll get that in front of them and hopefully we can take advantage of some more, some more of those funds.
Very good. 12C, we need to add Tammy as a member of the Water Development Committee?
Yeah, I asked for this to be on here. I would really like to have Tammy represent us with a seat up at the table of the Water Committee. We previously had Paul Santo on there as our representative. He's still on there, but as a citizen, so I'd like Tammy to be there when the AE2S study comes in, so I'll make a motion that we add her.
Motion in a second to add Tammy Janzmbach to the Water Development Committee. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is to hire Doris Brekis for the utility billing clerk position at 1637 an hour.
Right.
Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion in a second to hire Doris Brekis for this utility billing clerk at 1637. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I don't think we have any update on the grease trap inspection program. There are park board and Makita board minutes for your review and the agenda. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for a personnel matter.
Yeah, under 125, 21, like a start point, a sketch in there.
Yep. Motion in a second to go into executive session on a personnel matter. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I was trying to say 7:15 in this, in the same time there. Motion passes.